Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposing abstaining, portion carries. We are the executive. I'll call the public meeting to order. Please stand for saying the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the risen and just as father.
Turn it over to the superintendent.
We have a couple different presentations tonight, which is really exciting. And I would like to first turn it over to Ms. Pavlik, who has been here before to present some of the wonderful student art. So I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, esteemed members of the Board of Education guests. Thank you once again for the opportunity for me to present our amazing students artwork for our spring 2023 art show for our appreciation. I have three wonderful students tonight with me. I have Hallie, Michael and Haley. They've been working super hard to to show you all of their talent. This year we've done what's called the Global Art Passport. And we've been inspired by artists from all over the world, both historical and contemporary. And then we've created art based off of artists from Australia, Asia, Europe, and contemporary artists from all over. So I hope you enjoy. Thank you again for this opportunity.
So what we're going to do, we have a couple more students who we're going to call up, we're going to talk to for a minute. And then right after that, we're going to take a little break while people don't look at the artwork. And then they heard in some of the reflections in the back. Okay, so. Our district is very, very fortunate to be linked to an incredible BOCES program. Our career technical education program through all these Agribosies is fantastic. And it's a great opportunity for so many of our students, just to put it in perspective, about a third of our high school juniors and seniors participate in some way, shape or form in our CTE program, which is outstanding. It's really amazing. So tonight, we have a couple of students. So we've actually, we had four called Skills USA winners. Okay, we have two of our Skills USA winners who went and competed to represent our BOCES and did exceptionally well. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to call one up at a time. I'm going to come up there. We're going to talk, have them give them an opportunity to talk a little about what they did, what their competition was. And then we're going to present them with a certificate. Okay, so if I could first have Tyler Hutchinson meet me up there by the mic. Is it working? Do you hear a little thing? Okay. Tyler, can you tell us a little bit about what you did, how you started?
So I got invited to a state competition called Skills USA. And in that competition, it's a three day competition. In that competition, the first day you had to go and look over a blueprint and assemble the table that you're going to be building on. The second day is the main building day. You would go there and build a wall. And we had to do a little bit of masonry, plumbing, electrical. And then after that, all the judges would come around and assess and see which building was the best, basically. And just critique everything to do with electrical, plumbing, air industry and.
You represent a small of New York State, right?
Yeah, all of New York State.
And how'd you finish?
I got first.
The program that you're in, it's called what?
Building Maintenance Management.
And I have a certificate here, okay, and I'm going to read it to you, okay? It says. So it says, whereas the philosophy of education that we feel central school district calls for aiding all students in the development and achievement of their potential. And whereas the primary goals of the school district include encouraging each student to develop a sense of values and still a feeling of responsibility to self and others. As well as appreciation of good citizenship. Being resolved that the Board of Education and Central School District hereby recognizes the following student. Tyler Hutchinson for being selected as a first place winner in the Skills USA New York State competition for the teamwork. Congratulations. And next, also representing our district, our BOCES is Logan Birmingham.
I'm Logan. My competition was Criminal Justice Quiz Bowl. That is a competition where it is like Jeopardy style questionnaire about the criminal justice system, whether it be from paperwork forms, what they're called, violations in the traffic code, or it be just basically basic laws. Over that, we had to compete deciding which was the closest answer to it. There was a judge. Ours was a one day competition. Started at eight AM and ended around four PM that day. Then we were there competing. Then we got called back to the second round of competition. At that competition, we were fortunate enough to do well enough to get to the third place in the state.
That's awesome. Awesome. One question before, one question before. How many days was the competition? Two, three days?
Our competition was a one day competition. We were there from Thursday, no, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. We came home on Friday afternoon. And then our main competition was on Thursday all throughout the day.
Now, if you have any questions that you want to ask the ask all, I'm sure that. Well, congratulations. Let me, let me read here to you, okay? Whereas the philosophy of education and Central School District calls for aiding all students in the development and achievement of their potential. And whereas the primary goals of the school district include encouraging each student to develop a sense of values and still a feeling of responsibility to self and others. As well as an appreciation of good citizenship. Being resolved that the Board of Education and Central School District hereby recognizes the following student. Logan Birmingham. Just real quick, we did have two other winners. We'll make sure they get their certificates. They were not able to make it here tonight. One is Brian Zatkos, and he was on the Engineering Technology Design Team, and they finished first place. We also had Curtis Whitlock, who was a third place winner for the Criminal Justice Quiz Bowl team. So congratulations to both of them as well.
As well, and take a look at the art. We'll recess until 25 after.
So the other packet connected to this is our goals. And that's just there for your reference in more detail. The PowerPoint obviously are the highlights and some of the results that we've had this year. So if you need to refer back to the goals, that's what that's there for. So the first goal, which is common across the district, and I'm sure it was addressed a couple of weeks ago when the middle and high schools presented, is all about our safe environment. And that would mean both physical safety as well as social emotional safety and making sure that we have an inclusive environment. So regarding that, one of the things we want to do to meet that goal is to educate both our staff, including all staff, not just teachers, but administrators, SRPs, et cetera, as well as teacher, as well as students to empower them to be safe. Not just their own safety, but each other's safety. So one of the things that we do at the elementary level for, we have social emotional lessons at the K five level. Those are taught by not only our counselors, but by North Point Council. They come in and they do a series of 16 lessons that are grade appropriate for each grade. They also cover Aaron's Law, which is mandated in the beginning of the year. We go through that with our staff. And then it's also taught again at an age appropriate level for all of our students. We had an internet safety night. Also this year, something new is our invisible mentor program in which there is an adult connected with each student to make sure that everybody feels included and connected and has a place to, a safe place to go. So that we're providing tier one or basic training or education for all students. And then we have interventions for students who are at risk or need more. We'll talk about that a little bit later in our presentation. And then finally, something new this year from the law enforcement is pizza and paws. And they have their canine dog come in for the winning class, who it is a little bit different in each building. Like in my building is how many golden, the class that wins the most golden tickets. And different incentives than, you know, other buildings. But it's a really nice connection with law enforcement in our community. And then we also want to provide a safe inviting, as I said before, inclusive facility for everybody. So we do all have building safety team meetings that be three times a year. And we're all on the district safety team. As you know, we do all of our safety drills, lockdown evacuation drills routinely. We have fire safety week, which is pretty fun. We're finally back in person with that and having the fire department in. And a new thing this year, as you know, is our school security officers, which has been a great help. It's, it makes everybody feel safe to hear and start through. And it's just again, a good community connection. My security officer says he never wants to be sick because he doesn't want the substitute coming in and seeing what a great place Eric Road is and then taking his job. So I think, and I think that's, the feeling is mutual in all of the buildings, but it's great, it's great for the kids to see and connect with. We also have our diversity bulletin boards, which the students from the National Honor Society at our high school come by. About once a month and switch it up. So there's some interaction and connection there. And then we have classroom displays and library displays showing either different cultures, different holidays, different events throughout the year. Lastly, and I touched on this a little bit, we do collaborate with local law enforcement in our, on our safety teams. Our safety drill trainings. They also come in to help us in a faculty meeting with the run fight, run hide fight training and our tabletop scenarios. Lastly, for my slides, we, we want to promote social. We want to promote social, emotional and physical wellness. And these are some of our offerings that we have for our students. The Social Perspectives Program, which is the North Point Council, which I mentioned earlier. Clubs and intramurals, which Liz Carrery is going to touch on in the next couple of slides. Our Family Support Center. Lions Club Feed More at two of our, or three of our schools where we provide food and backpacks for kids to bring home. In addition to NW Care, we each have clothing closets in our building for families. CV utilizes Gateway Longview. We've also provided CPI de-escalation skills training for all of our staff, including aides and managers, not just teaching. And something new this year are our therapy dogs at Tuscarora and West Street. And we've included pictures of Ava and Roxy.
Alright. Okay. So as you can see, the next objective is to promote a supportive environment where all students feel valued. So I'm thrilled to present this slide. We have professional development that's ongoing. We have Indigenous Peoples' Day, boarding schools, Thanksgiving, new teachers in Tuscarora, teachers have PV with Joanne Weinholz. We had Jordan Smith come in and the dancers, the social dancers. So we actually have the dancers at Tuscarora School. We had them in Eric Road this year and some other presentations. So that was new and it was exciting to have everybody back together and in person. You can see one of my students on stage at Eric Road. That was so cool to be, be there and the feedback was great. So Joanne did a great job. We had Angela Jonathan and Chief Tom Jonathan go to CB and present feedwork and some history of the Tuscarora Nation. Cultural awareness. We also had PV with National Federation of Just Communities, Diversity 101 for all teachers and administrators. And then exposing students to authentic opportunities to learn about Native American culture. So again, just all of the beadwork and history of the nation. Tomorrow is Culture Night, I want to throw that in at Tuscarora School from six to eight. So another cultural experience for everyone who's invited the entire district. As you can see, clubs funded by ARC, the American Rescue Plan for the year. If you look at Tuscarora, that's under the Tuscarora funding. So we typically had study club, morning stretch yoga. TSN Einstein Club, I'll read them all, social dance intramurals, walking club, art club, drama club, Lego club, heat class, Cubs Cora. And then first T call. And it's great to see that the other buildings this year, due to the, our funding, were able to also add clubs. And you can see the amount of students that are involved, which is great. So with that. I'm going to raise the microphone because the tall people are doing goal two. So Therin and I are going to talk about goal two, which is really all about learning. Whether it's academic learning, social learning, emotional learning, or physical student learning. So the first objective is to work on our common scope and sequence documents. Either developing them and creating them or revising them because it's important as standards change that we're constantly revising them. So I'm going to just highlight a few things on this slide. For ELA, we have a focus team that's working on creating a scope and sequence for foundational skills for grades three through five. In ELA, we also have some teachers who are early adopters, highlighters. Of our new reading program that we're going to be rolling out next year to the entire district. In math, we have fifty-four teachers who are also early adopting a new program called Eureka Squared. Which is a second version of our math program that we're currently using. And they've been working with that and meeting with me once a month. And we're kind of talking about it, making adjustments and things for when the rest of the district rolls out. Everyone doing it next year. For science, we've been working on the New York State Investigations during training and implementation for that. Next year, the fifth graders will be assessed on the science content for the first time for the next generation standards. That's going to be a computer-based test. But then part of the requirements for the assessment is that students have participated in lab experiences prior to the assessment. The lab experiences will be, count for fifteen percent of the test. Will be the content on the task will be the lab experiences. So we've been working with teachers, get materials on that and to understand what those are and teach them. It's not just in fifth grade, there's some that are happening in third grade and some that are in fourth and then some that are in fifth, but it's for lab experiences. Also, physical education, the physical education teachers K through twelve worked with Mike Fisher this year. And they have created a scope and sequence that's aligned with the new physical education standards. And of course, whenever you have new programs, new standards, you also have professional development related with that. So we've been doing professional development on Eureka Squared. On some of the new components of the foundational skills like words their way, patterns of power, word love, which is a vocabulary. That we've incorporated in with our reading units of study. And then as well, we have professional development for teachers, for our new teachers. On things that we did professional development years ago that they weren't here for, so catching them up. Our next objective is to utilize assessment data to diagnose student needs and then drive instruction from that data. So we have DDI, which is, we've talked about DDI in the past because we've always done DDI with third through fifth grade. But this year, we rolled it out with K through two. And we started to do DDI at that grade level. Last year, we were working on creating the common assessments and this year we're up and running. And this, in the next couple of weeks, we're going to actually be starting writing out new assessments for grades three through five. That are in a CBT format because we're switching over to CBT next year. So we're going to be rewriting those common assessments based on the programs that we're rolling out next year as well. So we're updating those. Therin's going to talk a little bit about multi-tiered systems of support, so I won't talk about that. But we also used assessment data to determine where we were going to place our COVID funds. So there's a list there of some things that we've hired, being able to use the COVID grants. So there's additional teachers at grade three, grade two, grade four. And those are based on our FAS scores, looking at to say what were the students who were struggling coming out of COVID. And no big surprise, if you look back, those are the students who were either in pre-K kindergarten or first grade. That very first, been when it first happened and we went and we were using packets for four months. So that's where we really put resources in to reduce class size. We also added literacy specialists and math specialists at CV, Eric Road and West Street. And we have some data to show about that. The nice thing is with the additional literacy specialists, we were able to do some push-in literacy. So in addition to doing small groups, the reading teachers were able to go into those classroom grade levels. Where we were targeting, really trying to target getting kids back off COVID. They were able to go into the classrooms and work with the whole class of kids. The side, side thing with that is not only do the students get the added benefit of having teacher, a reading teacher working with them. But it's kind of built in professional development as well. Because the reading teacher gets to learn what the tier one curriculum is like. And on the same token, the classroom teacher is sitting next to a reading teacher who might be doing a group five foot away. Listening to the language and observing the things that the reading teacher is doing. And then they can do that in their small groups as well. So it's a dual advantage for the students getting to work with the reading specialist. And for the reading specialist and the classroom teacher to have that embedded professional development. There were also consultant teachers added at Colonial Village and Eric Road. An additional speech therapist that CB and Eric Road share. An additional counselor at CB. And then there's a part-time counselor at Eric Road that shared with the high school. So looking at that, with the addition of those reading and math specialists, we're first going to show you. What that did for math services and then I'll talk a little bit about reading. But on the left-hand side of this chart is last year. And the number of students with just one reading, or sorry, one math specialist at CB, one math specialist at Eric Road and one math specialist with West Street. We were able to service one hundred forty kids for extra help for math. And you'll notice that kindergarten and first grade is zero because when you had one person per building. We really didn't have enough time in the schedule for the interventionist to be able to work down with the kindergarten and first graders. With the addition, using the COVID funds of that second math specialist or third math specialist in a building. We've really been able to reach more kids for math intervention. So last year, we had a hundred and forty kids who could see a math specialist. But this year, we have more than double, with three hundred and fifty-two students being able to have the benefit of services from a math teacher. Same thing with literacy. With literacy, there was reading, additional reading added at Colonial Village, Eric Road and West Street. And you can see the numbers on the left. There, last year, we were able to service three hundred and one student, students. And this year, that number has gone up by two hundred. And now we have two hundred more students who have the benefit of working with the reading teacher. And those numbers do include, like I talked about, how they're pushing into classrooms and working with full classes of students as well. So really, we've been able to ride through the COVID grants. A lot more students are, have the ability to have tier two or tier three intervention.
So let's, let me stop for one second. Are you still with your presentation? Nora, just more, why don't you sit? To stand for thirty-five minutes. You've been working all day. How many you see people standing around you? I'm not going to make us feel bad right now, okay?
So this is a continuation of what Jen's talking about. And what this data will really show you is the number of students that were high risk in the fall. In both math and ELA. And then when you continue over, you'll see in, in the winter, what are the students that we've been able to help and get them back to grade level, basically? And get them out of that red. And this is really difficult work with students that, you know, really have a lot of gaps. I'll, I'll be honest with you, in my building, I've had a, I've had about twenty kids from other districts move in. That we've had some needs that, you know, it's great that we can do that. But, so there are some challenges, but basically that extra support has allowed us to move kids. So I think we'd all say thank you for that. Because it was, it was very important over these, this year especially, to really fine tune which kids can we. You know, work with that specialist. I'll also say that the math and K through two. I know in my building, it, it really made a huge difference. When I looked at the fast bridge, I was, I was kind of shocked because usually that data, you know, from the beginning of the year to the middle, you'll see a little bit of movement. But it was like, it was going up rather quickly. So that shows you, you know, and they're really targeted lessons. It's not like they're calling the kindergartner for twenty minutes. It's fifteen, ten, fifteen minutes of number sense, really targeted work, okay? And then next, I, you know, this slide we've had up before. It's basically just going over those tiered systems of support, the RTI, tier one, two, and three. Obviously, we're starting with core curriculum that we all are doing. Executing and then students that that's not working for, we're moving up the ladder. Tier two is where you go to a small group, right? Tier three, you need one-on-one and that can take the form of reading recovery. Orton Gillingham, we have some very strong targeted programs now that really are working. Child study teams, social emotional learning. We're also bringing those students in that are, are, you know, their behavior, their emotional state is not perfect. So we're going to work with them. We're going to talk about strategies and use our psychologists, counselors and social workers who are key players in those discussions. Sabers, my sabers, that is a new program in Fast Bridge that basically the students take a survey. And if they're struggling emotionally, there'll be some. Information that will come back so that we can highlight those kids. Summer school, we've got a hundred students. We know that those summer school opportunities at the elementary level were based on the federal money. And we're trying to really catch our last group. We were at about seventy, now we've gone up to a hundred based on some recruiting and really trying to target and reach out to those kids. The model this year will be five days a week versus four. So we're going to have some more student contact in there. That's going to be literacy, math and SCL based. Thank you.
So for goal three, the district will continue to increase community engagement and strengthen partnerships. And all our roles are kind of woven together. But goal three is kind of, is, is the heart. Because if you look at our first objective, student engagement is the key. If students aren't engaged in school and attending school, then all the other programs and the things that we've put in place really don't matter. So this very first objective that we have under this goal is extremely important. And it is to monitor student attendance and implement interventions to re-engage students in school. I think all across New York State schools, including Nyard Weefield. Have been a little concerned with looking at some of our chronic absenteeism that we've had with students coming out of. Coming out of COVID. And one of the things I think traditionally in schools, what we've looked at and targeted is our students who are chronically absent. And saying, okay, those are the kids we're going to target. But when you really think about it, when we're doing academics, Karen was just talking about, we have tier one, where we look at all kids. And we do interventions for them, for academics. And tier two for select kids and then three. And we were kind of just doing tier three. So what we have is everyday labs, which can help us to do those multi-tiered systems of support for attendance as well. So everyday labs, you might have heard about that or seen some letters. What they are, are letters that go home regularly to families. There's texts that go out to support students, send out to students who might have missed a certain number of days of school that says, hey, your child has missed seven days. Can we help you? And then that leads into the last part, which is that support bot. You'll see on the slides there are just, it's a little mock-up of what it looks like when a text comes home. And you can see that there's a little, at the end of the text, it says, if you need support, just text support. And then a family can text back support. And then it'll pop up and say, hey, what can we help you with? Do you need tech support, help, student help support, something with the schedule, registration? And then the family can interact and select learning. And then it will take them to a link on our website or it will give them a phone number to call. And so far, I can, I wrote this down so that I didn't miss say any numbers. But we sent out this year four thousand two hundred letters. Nine thousand seven hundred eighty-seven texts went out. And five hundred individuals interacted with that bot. And the most common hits that we had for that were requests for support with food or with health. With registration and then followed by transportation. Those were the top hits on the support bot, what families were looking for. So that's really great data for us as well. Everyday labs, that's the tier one supports where everyone gets that. Everyday labs also has a data dashboard, which really looks at our student attendance. So we can look at our students and say, hey, who's always missing school on Monday? Or who's always missing school on Friday? OR WHO'S ALWAYS MISSING SCHOOL ON FRIDAY? ARE THERE KIDS WHO MISS A LOT OF SCHOOL AT THE BEGINNING OF THE YEAR? AND IT IDENTIFIES GROUPS OF STUDENTS AND WE CAN GROUP STUDENTS TOGETHER. AND THEN LOOKING AT THAT, THEN THERE'S INTERVENTIONS. SO ONCE YOU KNOW IF SOMEONE CERT- MISSES A CERTAIN DAY OF WEEK. IT GIVES RECOMMENDATIONS FOR INTERVENTIONS THAT WE CAN USE WITH THOSE KIDS. SO IT'S REALLY BEATING UP RATHER THAN JUST SENDING OUT LETTERS TO STUDENTS, OH, YOU'RE CHRONICALLY ABSENCE, HERE'S A LETTER. IT'S REALLY INTROVENEING TO PREVENT STUDENTS FROM BECOMING CHRONICALLY ABSENCE. AND OF COURSE, WE STILL HAVE OUR BUILDING TEAMS THAT ARE WORKING WITH EVERYDAY LABS. NEXT YEAR WE'RE DOING THIS SUMMER AND IN THE FALL, WE'RE DOING SOME PROFESSIONAL DEVELOPMENT WITH THEM, WITH THE COUNSELORS. AND WE'LL REALLY BE ABLE TO, I THINK THIS YEAR WORK MORE ON THE TIER TWO AND TIER THREE ASPECTS OF EVERYDAY LABS. Almost finished. Lastly, connected to all of our other goals, we want to provide opportunities FOR THE FAMILY AND COMMUNITY TO ENGAGE IN OUR SCHOOLS. SO WE HAVE A BUNCH OF DIFFERENT ACTIVITIES TO TRY AND INCLUDE AND AND BRING FAMILIES IN. WE HAVE, WE'VE ALWAYS HAD PARENT GROUP MEANINGS IN ERIC ROAD AND COLONIAL VILLAGE. THIS PAST YEAR WE'VE HAD MOST OF THEM VIRTUAL. IT'S IT TOOK AWAY THE BABYSITTING ISSUE, IT TOOK AWAY THE TRANSPORTATION ISSUE AND THERE IS DEFINITELY MUCH MORE PARTICIPATION. WE'VE HAD THE IN PERSON PARENT GROUP MEANINGS AT THE OTHER TWO BUILDINGS. OPEN HOUSE THIS YEAR WAS IN PERSON AND THAT'S ALWAYS A BIG SHOWING, ONE OF OUR BIGGEST SHOWINGS NEXT TO OUR HELLAWEEN PARADE. WE ALSO REENGAGED PARENTS INTO THE BUILDINGS SO THEY ARE NOW ALLOWED TO COME BACK IN AND VOLUNTEER IN CLASSROOMS. IT'S REALLY NICE TO SEE THEM GETTING THEIR HANDS DIRTY WITH THEIR KIDS. PARENT TEACHER CONFERENCES, WE WERE ABLE TO OFFER DIFFERENT OPTIONS IN PERSON AS WELL AS VIRTUAL. AND PARENTS TO TAKE ADVANTAGE OF BOTH. WE AND WE HAVE THE GETTING READY FOR KINDERGARTEN NIGHT, THAT'S THIS TUESDAY. WHICH IS IN PERSON AND IS FOR ALL OF OUR PK STUDENT FAMILIES TO COME INTO THE DIFFERENT BUILDINGS AND MEET THE KINDERGARTEN TEACHERS. LEARN ABOUT WHAT THEY CAN BE DOING FOR KINDERGARTEN READINESS IN THE NEXT STEPS OF THE PROCESS. IN TERMS OF WHAT THEY HAVE TO DO FOR REGISTRATION, SCREENING, ET CETERA. PHYSICALS IN UNIZATIONS WILL ANSWER ALL OF THOSE QUESTIONS SO THAT THEY CAN BE PREPARED FOR THE FIRST WEEK OF SCHOOL. I MENTIONED THE HELLAWEEN PARADE, CB ALSO, WE ALL HAVE THE TRUCKY TRACK. AND THEN THERE ARE THE INVENTION CONVENTIONS TO SUPPORT OUR STEAM LEARNING AT COLONIAL VILLAGE AND WEST STREET. SO THOSE ARE ALL OF OUR GOALS AND ALL OF OUR WORK. THANK YOU FOR YOUR SUPPORT AND IF YOU HAVE ANY QUESTIONS, WE WOULD BE HAPPY TO ANSWER THEM.
I just have one. I know pre-COVID, we, our students were at a certain level, right? Now today, we have data that shows that we're. You know, got our students back on track where we were before COVID or how's that? I don't know.
Well.
I see that they, I see like this results showing going down, but I was just a point where we're now to a point where we're improving more.
There's definitely been growth, I mean across everything, there's definitely been growth. It's hard to compare WITH NEW YORK STATE ASSESSMENT DATA WHICH IS ONE OF THE BIGGEST MEASURMENTS THAT EVERYBODY SEEMS TO USE. BECAUSE THE TEST, THEY WEREN'T THERE FOR A FEW YEARS. AND LAST YEAR IT WAS ONLY LIKE THE MULTIPLE CHOICE, SO IT WASN'T EVEN REALLY, OR WAS IT TWO YEARS AGO, IT WASN'T A FULL TEST. LAST YEAR WAS THE FIRST FULL TEST SINCE COVID AND WE GOT THOSE RESULTS. BUT YOU REALLY CAN'T COMPARE THOSE TO ANYTHING SINCE THEY WERE WASN'T, WEREN'T REALLY TESTS FOR TWO YEARS BEFORE THAT. AND THIS THIS YEAR WE JUST TOOK OUR TEST, BUT WE WON'T GET THOSE RESULTS BACK PROBABLY UNTIL THE SUMMER.
It will be looked at, and I think THIS YEAR STATE TEST WILL HELP US, you know, look at LAST YEAR'S WHICH WILL BE THE KIDS KIND OF COMING OUT.
SO THIS SUMMER WILL BE THE FIRST YEAR WE'LL ACTUALLY HAVE A BASELINE FROM LAST YEAR TO COMPARE HOW THEY DID THIS YEAR. INCLUDING ALL THE EXTRA SUPPORT FROM ALL THOSE EXTRA POSITIONS. BUT WHEN WE LOOK AT OUR LIKE IN HOUSE DATA WHICH IS OUR FAST BRIDGE DATA, OUR OUR READING ASSESSMENTS AND OUR OWN MATH ASSESSMENTS, THERE'S THERE'S DEFINITELY IMPROVEMENT. AND ONE OF THE THINGS WE ARE LOOKING AT THAT WE SHOWED YOU UP HERE IS THE MOVEMENT OF KIDS OUT OF TIER THREE DOWN TO TIER TWO, DOWN TO TIER ONE. AND THE OTHER BIG PIECE IS THAT SOCIAL EMOTIONAL LEARNING, THE KIDS ARE COMING IN WITH A LOT MORE NEED. THEY WEREN'T OUTSIDE PLAYING, LEARNING THOSE SOCIAL SKILLS. AND THAT'S A BIG JOB TOO AND THAT HAS TO BE IN PLACE IN ORDER TO FOR THE BRAIN TO WORK FOR THE ACADEMICS. SO IT'S BEEN, IT'S BEEN A COLLECTIVE EFFORT, BUT IT'S DEFINITELY GOING IN THE RIGHT DACK.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. This will be an update on the federal stimulus funds. There are three acts, if you recall, there's the CARES ACT, THE CHRYSA ACT, AND THE ARP ACT. AND EACH ACT ACTUALLY HAS A COUPLE FUNDS, THERE'S GEAR AND THE ESER, THE GEAR TWO AND THE ESER TWO AND THE ESER THREE. WE'RE NOT GONNA TALK ABOUT CARES BECAUSE CARES IS ALREADY ALREADY THROUGH, BUT THOSE ARE THERE SIMPLY FOR YOUR REFERENCE. THIS IS ACTUALLY A REPLICA OF A SLIDE FROM THE LAST TIME THAT WE PRESENTED FOR YOUR. FOR YOU TO TAKE A LOOK AT IF YOU WOULD LIKE TO LATER. WE'RE GONNA TALK ABOUT CHRYSA AND WE'RE GONNA TALK ABOUT ARP. THE CHRYSA ACT HAD TWO FUNDS ASSOCIATED WITH IT, GEAR TWO AND ESER TWO. AS A REMINDER, CHRYSA WENT FROM MARCH TWO THOUSAND TWENTY THROUGH THIS COMING SEPTEMBER TWO THOUSAND TWENTY THREE, AT WHICH POINT IT WILL END. IN ESSENCE, IN GENERAL, WE SPENT THE GEAR TWO FUNDS ON CLEANING SUPPLIES AND IN GENERAL, WE SPENT THE ESER TWO FUNDS ON PEOPLE, PROGRAMS AND EQUIPMENT. SOME EXAMPLES THAT WE, OF WHICH WE WE SPENT CHRYSA FUNDS ON. FIVE ELEMENTARY SPECIALISTS READING AND MATH, YOU HEARD ABOUT SOME OF THEM JUST A MOMENT AGO, SPEECH TEACHER, ADDITIONAL DAY CLEANING STAFF. THE ELEMENTARY SUMMER PROGRAM CAME OUT OF CHRYSA, INCLUDING THIS SUMMER, THIS SUMMER'S SUMMER PROGRAM AS WELL, THAT WILL BE THE THIRD AND FINAL YEAR. OUR ETMS SUMMER PROGRAM AND IN HIGH SCHOOL AS WELL. THE SECONDARY TUTORIATE PROGRAM, COUPLE VANS ACTUALLY AND SOME CLEANING SUPPLIES AS WELL AS THIS NEW K THROUGH TWELVE SUPPLEMENTAL READING PROGRAM THAT CALLED ZELLO. THE NEW PIECE HERE IS THAT WE WROTE AN AMENDMENT, WE RELOCATED SOME UNSPEND FUNDS FOR RENTAL COSTS ACTUALLY FOR EXTERNAL STOREAGE AND WE DID THAT OUT OF THE GEAR FUN. AND THAT I BELIEVE WAS TO ACCOMMODATE THE MATERIALS AND EQUIPMENT THAT HAD TO BE REMOVED FROM THE CLASSROOMS FOR THE PURPOSES OF SOCIAL DISTANCING BACK DURING COVID. AND THAT BASICALLY WILL WRAP UP CHRYSA, AGAIN, IT WILL BE COMPLETING THIS SEPTEMBER.
SO THE NEXT ONE IS THE AMERICAN RESCUE PLAN. AND THIS ONE GOES FROM, WENT FROM, STARTED IN MARCH TWO THOUSAND TWENTY AND THIS ONE WE HAVE ANOTHER YEAR LEFT. AND THIS, THE FUNDS WILL NO LONGER BE ABLE AVAILABLE AS OF SEPTEMBER TWO THOUSAND TWENTY FOUR. AND. THE ARP FUNDS, THEN WAS OVER FOUR AND A HALF MILLION DOLLARS. AND WE USE THAT FOR PEOPLE, PROGRAMS AND EQUIPMENT AND SOME OF THOSE THINGS ARE SHOWN ON THIS SLIDE. HIGH SCHOOL COUNSELORS, A PHYSICAL EDUCATION TEACHER, A PSYCHOLOGIST, A SPECIAL EDUCATION TEACHER, A READING SPECIALIST. HIGH SCHOOL AIS TUDORS, FAMILY SUPPORT CENTER, SUMMER COUNSELING. THE COMMUNITY EDUCATION SUMMER PROGRAM FOR ENRICHMENT THAT'S RUN. THE INTERMURALS AND CLUB ADVISORS THAT WAS JUST REFERENCED TO THE LAST PRESENTATION. SOME PERSONAL PROTECTIVE EQUIPMENT, CRISIS PREVENTION TRAINING, MASKS AND Gowns, FLOOR CLEANERS AND CHROME BOOKS FOR STUDENTS. WE RECENTLY DID AN AMENDMENT BECAUSE THERE WERE SOME THINGS THAT HAVE BEEN IN CHRYSA THAT WE HAVE FOUND VERY VALUABLE. AND WANTED TO CONTINUE AFTER THE CHRYSA FUNDS END. SO WE DID SOME AMENDMENTS AND TOOK OUT SOME THINGS THAT WE WEREN'T NECESSARILY USING AS MUCH. AND SUBSTITUTED IN SHOWING WITH OUR DATA SOME PROGRAMS THAT HAVE REALLY MADE A DIFFERENCE. SO WITH THAT, WE PUT IN AN AMENDMENT TO EXTEND TO HAVE TWO ELEMENTARY MATH SPECIALISTS TO CONTINUE THAT WORK. AND KEEPING ONE OF THE ELEMENTARY READING SPECIALISTS. EXTENDING ONE OF THE SOCIAL WORKERS, THE PSYCHOLOGIST WAS ORIGINALLY WRITTEN IN FOR ONE YEAR, SO WE BROUGHT THAT IN FOR TWO MORE YEARS. THIS SCHOOL YEAR AND NEXT. TO HAVE A SCHOOL OFFICER AT THE SUMMER SCHOOL THIS SUMMER. AND THEN COORDINATOR ROLES FOR THE GRANT.
THAT IS A WRAP UP OF THE STATUS OF THE FEDERAL STIMULUS FUNDS AS WELL AS THE RECENT AMENDMENTS AND RELOCATIONS THAT WE WROTE.
I would just like that, and just. Oh, Jen, Jen. Deanna. The the amount of work that they put into this was was really incredible. All of these things that are talked about all have to fit really nicely and be packaged neatly for the state, quite frankly. How this stuff had to, has to be reported and had to be reported wasn't clearly demonstrated. When the money key first came out and what, you know, so and the other thing that's really quite amazing is. We, as a group, were. Very close in like what we initially planned out for expenditures throughout the the years of these funds. To the end of this where, you know, we're, we're looking at a very small gap come the end of this and. I'm happy to say that the the that plan it worked and as you saw going through, I mean. Put aside some of the PPE, you know, the the double COVID. So much of this was used for. People to be working DIRECTLY WITH KIDS AND, you know, we believed FROM THE START OF THIS WITH THESE FUNDS THAT THAT'S HOW WE WERE GOING TO BEST. Help catch our kids up and I, you know, I think we would all say that. We still believe that and we know that we have another year to help catch our kids up. But but really nice job to all of you for for making it happen, our really administrators for for putting the plans into place, so thank you.
Thank you. Were there any resident partners on that? All right, I'll call for a motion to accept the consensus agenda item I submitted.
I'll make a motion.
Any discussion of any item there? If not, then all those. I'll call for a vote, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, both abstaining, which carries. A call for motion to accept the personnel report is submitted. One second. Anything to separate? We'll vote on this first. All right, then, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, both abstaining, which carries. EXO'S OFFICIAL STUDENT MEMBERS REPORT.
Hey, well, we are slowly winding down. We have roughly seventeen, eighteen DAYS OF SCHOOL UP FOR EXAMS FOR HIGH SCHOOL. Just a couple of things coming up, um, prom is June second. At Sanos Grand Manor, we have our NHS INDUCTION AND OUR SENIOR RECOGNITION NIGHT ON JUNE EIGHT. THERE IS THE SENIOR COMMUNITY OF AWARDS CEREMONY ON JUNE FIFTH AT SEVEN OFTHEM AUDITORIUM. Seniors have their picnic, JUNE NINE. And then our last day of classes before exams is JUNE THIRTEEN. Graduation is JUNE TWENTY SECOND AND THEN ONE ONGOING THING WHICH IS OUR TAKE A GOOD TEACHING PUB. JOIN BOLTON BOARD TO THE ELEMENTARY SCHOOLS, SAW A PICTURE OF ONE OF THEM IN OUR CSAT. Presentation, we just put up our last night, Eric Road, uh, last week and yeah.
All right, and you're counting the days down, right? How many days is seven? There you go. All right, um, superintendent report.
First, I want to, just a moment, to thank our school community for those who didn't come out to vote yesterday. We were a little concerned just with voter turnout in the morning, but it certainly picked up in the afternoon. So we just want to thank all those who were able to come out and vote yesterday. A special thank you to Maureen. The whole, it was a new system and and it really. Turned out to be pretty flawless and it looked really simple and it looked, everything was smooth, but there was so much work that went on. Behind all that to make it look that way, so Maureen, thanks for all of your work. I know Jerry was instrumental too and comes back every single year. And quite frankly, we're thrilled that many of the. Individuals who come to work with us from the county come back every single year and we, we get to know them and they just, they do a great job for us. So, thank you, great work. Iron Tom.
Just a couple of quick updates for the board. We're putting the final touches on our certified staff for next year. For classrooms, buildings, so on and so forth, and the instructional piece. Over the summer months, there will be some replacements, especially for those food serves, teacher aides. But we're very soon to put together a broadcasting list, if you will, for. Searching out additional bus drivers and attendants, and we're gonna work really, really hard on that this summer, we all know that's a need, it's a regional need as well as national. So it's one of those things that we'll continue to put the full press on and try to attract those individuals to the district.
I think I've become spoiled with high school musicals because they always seem like such professional productions, right? I'm always more blown away when you see our middle school productions because of. How incredible they are when you know that you have kids that are in sixth, seventh, eighth grade in those productions. It's unbelievable. And this year, the musical was Into the Woods Junior. Congratulations to everybody involved, it was was truly awesome and. Especially for, you know, one of the things that you see in kids who have been out of the musicals and we've talked about it enough, you know, having been able to engage in a lot of these activities. You would have never known, they were, it was really an awesome production, so those who did get a chance to see it, good for you, I certainly enjoyed it. June seventh, which is our next meeting, we will have an art show between six and six thirty PM. From our high school and that'll be in the main foyer. And then the retirement reception will be in the, in the, in this room between six thirty and seven and then. When the meeting starts, we'll go into writing, most were retiring from our district. One thing that we need to talk a little bit about is the reorganization meeting, it's the one meeting that we set. For next year until the reorganization meeting. My recommendation or would be the. July twelfth, Wednesday, July twelfth. The week prior to that, I will, I'm just not available, so if that works for everybody, if not, we can certainly work around it. But it has to be within the first fifteen DAYS OR FOURTEEN DAYS OF OF THE MONTH OF JULY. I don't know if you have any thoughts on that, maybe hold that for one thing, one last thing I do want to talk about. On April twenty ninth, we, I just, we were able to put out a little video on the Saturday of service, but. What what was really neat is we had, I had some people come up during the budget vote. And. If in some cases that kids didn't, hadn't participated, they said it was really good to know that those things were going on next year, they wanted to have their kids involved. And there were a couple others who came in and said, you know, that their kids really enjoyed it and they they were involved. One of the parents, you know, was here for the the wellness walk and then really enjoyed it, so. Those things that the whole goal and the whole purpose of all those with our CDF TEAM WAS TO CREATE SOME OF THAT ENGAGEMENT. And it certainly seems like it's working, so thank you to all of you who were involved in those activities.
Okay, any questions, the superintendent has report. All right, I was for board discussion. The first thing, the reorg meeting, you said you won't be able to make the twelfth?
I can make the twelfth.
You can make the twelfth.
Yeah, make the twelfth.
Cannot make the.
Yeah, I think the twelfth's fine. Cause I mean with the fourth of July, I mean, it's right after the fourth of July and those people are. We would have one in July anyways.
We have to have it before when?
Before the four, before the fifteenth, it has to be the fourteenth is the last day you have to have it.
And I know we've done that both ways, we've done sometimes two in July and one in August or vice versa, so. You know, if if you were gonna do the one, moving that one back to July twelfth, maybe you do one in July this year and then do two in August.
Yeah, better, I mean, we could usually have, well, we could easily have one the last week of July and then wait to the last week of August. You know, not worry about the beginning of August. So I would go with July twelfth and then do two weeks from there, which would be the. The twenty sixth, yeah. And then we'll have the last meeting, we'll go with the last week in August, or the second from last week of August. Yeah, for hiring purposes and things like that there, so. Cause that way we avoid the first week of August when a lot of people are going away since it's, you know.
I don't know if I'll make the twelfth, but.
Okay. Next thing, tomorrow night is a dinner recognition for our top students and superintendent. I was gonna originally go, but now there are NFL track meet tomorrow that my son's in and I do not want to miss that. So is there another board member that would be interested in going to dinner tonight?
So is there another board member that would be interested in going to dinner tomorrow?
What was that called?
Yeah, I'm gonna explain that better than I can.
The SARD is the Scholastic Achievement Recognition Dinner, and each year, um, Erie and Niagara County, uh, participate in it, and it, what, what it is, it's the the students who are first, second, and third in their class, um, along with superintendent principal and the board member representative. So it's a really nice dinner, and it's at, um, Salvator's?
I believe so.
Salvator's, it's, it's honoring the kids, but whichever one of you comes, you don't have to speak. Um, you know, you just, you just have to eat a nice meal with some, some really great kids.
And it's one?
Tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night.
So if anyone makes it.
It, it, I'm pulling it up right now, sorry, give me one second. It is at six fifteen. Six fifteen's the reception, the dinner's at seven.
If you guys, none of those two can make it, I, I'll make.
Okay, I mean, I don't, if you guys wanna do a cage match, who goes, I don't care, I mean.
I mean, I can make it, but if you wanna go, I don't have a problem. No matter. I can go.
You guys talk after the meeting, we'll just let them.
Rock, paper, scissors.
Perfect, whatever you, thank you.
All right, the next thing, uh, for an agenda item for the next meeting, I would like to add, um, we were contacted by, uh, the head of, um, one of the local fire halls for the volunteer fire men's tax exemption. Uh, similar to the veterans tax exemption, um, you know, that has been, uh, employed in your state, so. Um, I like to put that on next meeting agenda to have a discussion. I, I told that, that gentleman that we would do that. So, um, if you can get some information to the board for that previously, so we can look it over. Any other items for board discussion?
When we do, it's, I, that's for all the volunteer, right? Not just the ones that.
Right, this for all. Yeah, he was, I mean, that gentleman was the one that just brought it up to me, so. All right, uh, any old business? Any new business? Public comments? Jeff? Any board member comments? All right, I'll call for motion to, oh, actually, sorry.
I just wanted to thank everyone for the presentation.
Yeah, thank you.
It was a great presentation, uh, great art exhibit for the, for the teacher and all the young kids.
All right, then, I'll call for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Let's move to the second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Vote for abstaining, or adjourn.
Hey, Braden?